Okay. Okay, call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for January 10, 2022 at our new start time at 7:00 PM. Everyone in attendance, please silence your cell phones as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Elsawafi. Councilmember Herrick. Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Before we go on to our... Yes, Councilman Abraham is not here, so for the introduction, I will take it for this time is not him right now. So, at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Ryan Wilson of the Dearborn Free Methodist Church, who will give our invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone that is able, please stand and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance after. Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for bringing us into a new year with new opportunities to see your goodness and to experience your faithfulness in leading us through difficulties. Lord, this evening, I ask for a spirit of unity that we would all seek and pray for peace and prosperity of our city, because if it prospers, we all prosper. And Lord, we gather here on this night where city business is conducted at the first meeting of the new year. And so, Lord, this evening, Lord, I pray that you would bless our mayor and our elected city officials. May we remember to pray for them often, because if they prosper, our city prospers. Lord, we pray that we would all seek you and your right and good ways. Give our mayor and our city leaders, staff, and council wisdom so that they may solve problems and distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. We pray that you would bless them so that they would be a blessing to others. Help them to live righteously. Your word says that when the righteous prosper, the whole city rejoices. And as they speak and listen and make decisions, may they be the right decisions made at the right time. May their conscience be kept clean before God and people. May they dedicate themselves to you and your goodness, justice, and mercy. Strengthen them when they feel weak. Speak to them when they feel confused. Protect them when they are unjustly opposed. And above all, give them love for the people whom they serve. Lord, I also pray for the citizens of Dearborn and families in this new year. I ask where there is brokenness, you would bring wholeness. Where there is pain, you would bring healing. Where there is injustice, may it be stomped out by your love and grace. In this new year, help us not only to right the wrongs that have been done with words only, but may we show extreme generosity to all people. May there be a deep respect for all human life, no matter our skin color or ethnicity, as we are all made in the image of God. And so now, Lord, I commit our mayor and our officials to you. Go before them, giving them wisdom. Go beside them and keep them in your care. Be under them to catch them when in despair, and be above them to give them hope. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. Thank you very much again Pastor. At this time, I'd like an offer and support to suspend the rules for a slight introduction.
I'll offer.
Offered by Councilman Hamud and supported by Councilwoman Herrick. Hearing no objection, if there's any objection to unanimous roll, hearing so forth, it is attached, the rules are suspended. At this time, I just wanted to give an introduction to our council member, newly council member that has been sworn in and elected, Gary Enos. I wanted to make sure that all of our residents knew that as our departing Aaron Burns had took higher office, this has happened a few times in our council lineage, the next person comes on, which I know that we are in the current state of looking at our charter, and I wanted to make it clear that I believe this is, in my opinion, a very democratic way that the people have, instead of the body picking the next person, Mr. Enos was the eighth person selected by the residents and is now officially going to take over and serve the rest of this term to the 34th Council. So, Mr. Enos, we just wanted to thank you and welcome you to our Dearborn City Council.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Would you like to make any comments for yourself?
Real quick, real brief.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank everyone for walking me and supporting me. I'm honored and humbled to be here. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with my colleagues, as well as Mayor Hamud and his administration. I look forward to representing the community and communicating with and responding to the needs of Dearborn's residents. I'm thankful to be able to serve our great city as a council member and to give back to the city that has given so much to me and my family.
Thank you very much, Mr. Enos. Thank you. Appreciate that. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we are going to continue on our regularly scheduled council meeting. The first item of business is public comment, which is allowed for 30 minutes at the beginning. And remember, there's always public comment on each individual item at the time it's called. And again, there's another unlimited public comment at the end of the meeting as well. So, we did have some cards filled out, and the first one is Mr. Hassan On. Mr. On, would you like to step forward?
My name is Hassan On. I filed a complaint against the officer. Internal Affairs came downstairs, and I said I want to file. She goes, why don't you file just a grievance? Why do you want to file a police report? When does Internal Affairs tell a citizen to file a grievance and not a police report? Now, don't you guys think when you send it upstairs to detectives, isn't that a conflict of interest? It is a conflict of interest. How are you going to investigate your own cops? Well, she tells me, oh, I got to talk to Chief Shaheen. I'll talk to Chief Shaheen. Shaheen should know automatically that it's supposed to go to MSP. You cannot investigate your own cops. Internal Affairs is not supposed to be in Dearborn. It's supposed to be in another department, because it's looking like Internal Affairs work with the police. Detroit Police have their own Internal Affairs. This is uncalled for. How are you going to get justice? Well, she tells me, oh, I got to talk to the chief to see if it's going to go to MSP. He knows it's a conflict of interest. It's like a judge taking a case that he represented this person. Maybe they're buddy-buddies. He knows the cop, he's buddies with him. If I push the officer, would I be arrested? Yes, I would. He assaulted me. I want criminal charges against this officer, and I'm asking you guys to send it to MSP. I talked to Internal Affairs. I sent her email today. She did not respond to me. I said, if you don't respond to me, I'm coming to City Council to address the issue. Enough is enough, and I'm asking you guys to sit there and take action. And I want Internal Affairs out of Dearborn, put somewhere else to investigate the police, because they're buddy-buddies. And I got the body cam, Mike. You want to see it?
No, I'm sure you have.
Would you like to see the body cam? When she told me, do you want to file a grievance? You're telling me to file a grievance when the guy assaulted me?
Okay.
There's criminal charges here.
I'm going to let you finish, and I'll respond, Mr. On.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, Mr. On, thank you for coming. What I want to do is talk to our city attorneys who are present as far as the process aspect. You're indicating that Internal Affairs should not be investigating their own personnel, but Mr. Romer, can you speak to that on the process as far as how that is a normal course over the...
Normal?
In the police? No, he's going to give us how it happens. Let's let him speak.
I wouldn't say it's uncommon to have in Internal Affairs within a police department to investigate citizen complaints or any type of complaints made against officers, especially of a department the size of Dearborn. So, he's entitled to his opinion. I think we just disagree as to whether...
I got one question.
Okay, Mr. On, let me finish. Hang on, hang on. So, Mr. Romer, you're saying it's not uncommon the way this is, of course, the way it's happening right now, as far as that it's handled internally to determine whether it goes further from there?
No.
Okay. Your mic's on. It's on.
He said it's not uncommon. That was the answer.
It's not uncommon. Yeah, it's correct. Okay. Chief, would you like to speak on this issue?
Council President Easus Shaheen, Chief of Police. If I may, if Mr. On feels that he's been the victim of misconduct or anything, I encourage him, he is welcome to file a complaint with the state police, and I'd have no objection to letting them investigate it. So, if you're more comfortable doing that, Mr. On, you're welcome to, not supported, okay?
Well, he could transfer to MSP.
Well, I know...
Why should we file on this police...
No, 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 hang on. Mr. On, the process is, the internal process handled through the Dearborn Police, but what the chief is indicating is that you have the right as a citizen to file your complaint separately, and then they can choose MSP to come and investigate themselves. Because remember, the investigation, they're the body that's going to determine whether it reaches a threshold of investigating or not, not this council body.
No, I'm not saying council body.
Right.
I'm telling you, Internal Affairs should not be in this department.
Right, I understand, but that is not...
It's...
I understand what you're pronouncing.
Think about it. You're buddy-buddies with the police.
Right.
Okay? The chief of police is buddy-buddies with them. The guy pushed me, it's on body cam.
I understand.
And she told me she's going to call me back. She never called me back. It's like she's telling me to do this. She doesn't want to have criminal charges against him.
What I would do, Mr. On...
Because if I pushed a police officer, I would have been arrested.
No, no, Mr. On, we understand, but at this time, we took your complaint. Your options are, as indicated, to file a separate complaint with the Michigan State Police, and you could provide them with your evidence at that point. It's not for this body, so there's not much more we can do for you at this point.
So, it's not for this body? So, you're telling me you're going to keep Internal Affairs upstairs, and it's okay for a police officer to assault somebody, and you guys are just going to take the complaint? You just take the complaint? Who do you refer your complaints to?
Mr. On.
When somebody shoots somebody, who do you refer it to? When somebody does something, who you refer it to?
Okay, Mr. On.
You guys refer it to MSP. It's common sense.
Right.
You just want to make me look like the bad guy.
No, we're not.
No problem, Mike.
Mr. On, you have the process.
I understand where this is coming from here.
You have the process, you can handle your process. It's not for this body.
Yeah, but it can be turned over to MSP. They'll stay here. I'll turn this over to MSP.
I understand.
Why should we file a report? Why should I go file another report?
You heard the chief's opinion on it, and you heard the city attorney's opinion on it. So, at this time, there's not much more...
Can you give me the police report? I'll just hand it over to the WhatsApp.
You can...
I filed a WhatsApp. By tomorrow, I want the police report.
Mr. On.
And by email.
This is not the police station.
No, I'm asking, I understand. I'm asking you that. I want the police report sent to my email tomorrow. I already did a FOIA request for it. Send it, I give it to MSP.
I don't know why...
I'll go from there.
Okay, Mr. On, we're finished from here. I don't know why you would do a FOIA request on a report you made yourself.
Why? Because I don't want to be bothered. I do FOIA requests on my own.
I understand, but you can go ahead and get what you need to get, but it's not for this body. So, we're done here. I can't do anything.
Okay, no problem. You can't do nothing?
I appreciate it.
So, that means you guys are going to sit there and let the police arrest the citizens? And what's the grievance? I'm asking you, what's the grievance?
The grievance is to file a complaint.
Okay.
That's where your right is.
Okay.
It's not for the council body to discuss it for you. We're not going to discuss procedure.
File a complaint, so you're just going to keep Internal Affairs here. Thanks, bro.
Thank you, Mr. On.
Thanks, brother.
All right. Next, we have Mary Ann Zalasko.
Mary Ann Zalasko, 13108 Spur Street, South Gate. I'm here because I believe that each of you, when you took the oath of office, agreed to follow the laws of the state of Michigan. Is that correct? When you took the oath...
Ma'am, this time is for you to speak about it. You're not...
Okay.
This is not a question-and-answer session.
Okay. I hope at least one of you will have the courage to say that this is wrong. I can name four violations of Act 381. First one, excerpt from the law. "The authority shall prepare and approve a budget for the operation of the authority for the ensuing fiscal year. The mayor is not the board, the council is not the board, the city is not the board. The board and the authority, it was formed under Act 381. They had no meetings in 2022. How then could they prepare and adopt a budget?" Second violation. Act reads, "The board shall adopt rules governing its procedure and the holding of regular meetings. Meetings of the board shall be open to the public in accordance with the Opens Meeting Act." Pull up on your calendar, and you will see there were no BRA meetings in 2022. There are no BRA meetings in 2023. If I had a right as a taxpayer to go before this independent board, I can't. They have no meetings. So, you are preventing me, or the city by not having a BRA meeting, is preventing me from asking the independent board to look at the various agreements and to see that they are not following the law. This is state law. The third violation, the board is allowed to capture up to $100,000 for annual admin. That money has to be spent in that year. If it's not, it has to be turned back to the taxing agencies. I have an email exchange with a brownfield coordinator from the state of Michigan saying that that is still true.
You have 30 seconds.
If the budget and if the annual report is correct, I'm not sure how the board could possibly have a positive change in its fund of almost a half a million dollars, when the only money should be interest and money going into the revolving fund. It's not spending it like it should. The fourth violation is a capture. I will tell the board if and when it meets, because there is a project that is incorrectly capturing money for the brownfield.
Your term has expired.
Thank you, Ms. On.
Would you be interested in the excerpts from the law?
Yeah, absolutely. There's no... Yeah, it's the state law. I can take a copy. We're going to provide it to our legal department, and we can go from there. Thank you. Okay. At this time, is there anyone else here to speak on matters regarding city business to the City Council? Please step forward to state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing seen and done, we will close our public comment portion, the first public comment portion, and return to our regularly scheduled council meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we have our next item of business?
Item number five is a resolution in need of offer and support approving all items of the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Offered.
Offered by Councilwoman Herrick. Supported by Councilman Paris. Any questions or comments on these items? Okay, and immediate effect will be attached. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yep.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Sixty-eight, the resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item number nineteen, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of December 14, 2022, and the regular meeting of December 6, 2022.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the minutes? Hearing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty, ordinance number 22-1783, an ordinance to amend Chapter Two by expanding Section 2-369 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn entitled Commission of Disability Concerns, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Abraham to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment would remove the residency requirement for members on the Commission of Disability Concerns and allow commissioners that work within the city to participate. The commission has a total of nine members, and a maximum of four members may work for an employer located within the city of Dearborn boundaries. By expanding the membership, it is to include both residents and individuals who work within the city and will increase the number of prospective members for this commission. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to remind the public that there are many opportunities to become involved in your city, in helping the council make decisions, in helping the administration get feedback on behalf of residents. So, if you are interested in serving on the Commission on Disability Concerns or any other commission or committee for the city, check out the city's website for a list of a brief description of each of the opportunities. And if you're interested, there's a way to link and provide your application, or you're welcome to contact council, or any of the people that sit on those committees, if you know anybody, to find out more about what that entails, if you'd like to learn more before you apply. But we really encourage public participation, because this is your opportunity as a resident of the city to have a voice in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other of my colleagues have anything to add? Anyone from the public? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final read?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1783 entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter Two by expanding Section 2-369 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn entitled Commission on Disability Concerns.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilman Enos.
Yes.
Sixty-eight, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item twenty-one, ordinance number 23-1784 introduced by councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the traffic and motor vehicle chapter, Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-819 entitled Maximum Charges.
Okay, ordinance, Section 18-819 sets the minimum service fees and charges for wreckers and towing services involving removal of vehicles from private property without consent of the vehicle owner. It also sets minimum standards for hours that owners may retrieve their vehicle, requires that companies accept major credit cards, and requires companies to provide a receipt of payment. Under the ordinance, council established the minimum service fees and charges by resolution. Currently, the ordinance does not specify a penalty for violation, therefore defaults to a 93-day possible misserener under Section 1-9. The proposed amendment would change the penalty to a civil infraction punishable by a fine of $1,000, and if a second violation occurs within six months, the fine will increase to $2,500. This is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Anyone from the public? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 23-1784 entitled an ordinance to amend the traffic and motor vehicles chapter, Chapter 18 of the Code of the Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-819 entitled Maximum Charges, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Abraham to table the ordinance.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Paris?
May I just ask one comment on this, just to clarify? I know from the committee, the whole, I just want to be clear on this. This is only for non-commercial vehicles? Is that correct?
Mr. Over.
Yeah, if you look into the backup, it's the blue portion. We added that provision to make clear that exactly the point you're making right now.
Okay. What I wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yep.
No, you're right.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Oh, unanimous roll.
Okay.
Unanimous roll attached, right?
Yes.
Yes, next item.
Thank you. Item twenty-two, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Abraham acknowledging the donation of a 70-inch Vizio TV from Shingle and Metal Roofs LLC for the residents of Hubbard Manor East.
Okay, the residents of Hubbard Manor East identified a need for a new TV for the residents' use, and the resident liaison, Ms. Allen, solicited a donation from the Shingle and Metal Roofs LLC for this TV. The Roofing Company donated the 70-inch TV for the residents and men of, of course, Hubbard Manor East, and we would like to thank them for their donation and appreciate it. This is immediate request as well for the item. Any questions or comments on this item? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, again, we'd like to thank them. Hearing seen and done, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item twenty-three, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Enos awarding a contract to the Michigan State Police in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for armed police service at Camp Dearborn for the 2023 operating season and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, Camp Dearborn requires armed police services to assist with campground safety and police services. The contract term is from Memorial Day through Labor Day and is scheduled through the camp manager and the State Police Department. Michigan State Police performed successfully during the last five camp seasons from 2018 to 2022, meeting all the needs of the Recreation Department. Camper safety, as well as being well-enhanced with the Michigan State Police presence in the 2023 camp season, makes the camping experience as safer and enjoyable as possible for our people visiting Camp Dearborn. The contract is not to exceed $200,000, and his immediate request is being authorized as well. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Paris.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure that the public is aware too of this contract. If we go back in time, we can all remember when we had our own Camp Dearborn officers. We can remember when Oakland County sheriffs were out there. But keep in mind with the contract not to exceed $200,000 for the Michigan State Police, that at one time Oakland County was charging us $550,000 for the same kind of services. And then you go back in time to just a few years ago, even Michigan State Police back in 2020 was $277,000 plus, and then again for same for 2021. So, now coming before us to have a contract for providing the excellent services that MSP has been provided, our property out of Camp Dearborn, I don't know how anybody can say that this is a bad deal. You know, $200,000 is very good, and I appreciate what the city did with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing seen and done, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item twenty-four, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamud awarding a contract to Asbestos Abatement, Inc., lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount not to exceed $84,415.41 for demolition and disposal of abandoned trailers at Camp Dearborn and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, in an effort to maintain a unified Camp Dearborn, 44 trailers have been identified as ready for demolition and removal. These abandoned trailers are an eyesore and a health hazard for Camp Dearborn visitors and are detrimental to the overall aesthetics of the property. The total cost of the project is $84,415.41, and immediate effect is being requested. Work will begin within two weeks of the award of the contract. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Councilman Paris?
And again, regarding Camp Dearborn, just going back just a couple of years ago, we did approve another contract to remove up to 30 trailers in a two-year period, 15 one year, 15 in another, and it was considerably more. I believe it was $133,000. So, here we are looking to remove 44 trailers for $84,000. So, we're getting our money's worth out of this, and we do have to remove some trailers out of Camp Dearborn. And a concern, just to make sure, I know it was brought up during the committee of to make sure, I know it was brought up during the committee of the whole too, as far as notification, that there's been proper notification of the owners, and I believe it's gone back maybe two years now that we've been notifying. Is that correct, or is that anything that I can hear from our corporation council to make sure that we did our due diligence and we are notifying the owners of these trailers?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate it. That was a good point. There was some discussion on the committee of the whole regarding that. I did bring that up in the past because abandonment has a specific procedure in the law, and I was assured by the Leo Department that that is being handled properly. So the idea, as everyone knows, is to unify Camp Dearborn, and some of the trailers have come to the position where they're not movable, and they need to be movable according to the state law. So we're working towards getting that up to standards that we expect in the city of Dearborn, so we do appreciate that. Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 25, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Enos, awarding a competitive purchase to Pegasus Entertainment, the lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount not to exceed $61,500 for a lighting console for the Michael A. Guido Theater and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and through a grant made possible by Shutter Venues Operations Grant, the Michael A. Guido Theater intends to replace a current lighting console to allow our customers to experience state-of-the-art lighting for their shows. The Recreation and Parks Department Theater Division, current council has served its, has served its life expectancy and does not support the use of moving lights and is no longer serviceable by the manufacturer, is based on software that is no longer recommended in the industry. The Shutter Venues Operation Grant awarded to the City of Dearborn in the amount of $136,085.38. Total amount of the grant being used for this project is $61,500 for the purchase of the new ETC EOS Apex Lighting Council, which is best suited for our current operations in the theater today. And there is immediate request being authorized as well. Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank the Recreation Department and our Grants Department for seeking and taking advantage of the Shutter Venues Grant Program that helps theaters that were closed and affected by the pandemic. And this was just a really timely opportunity for our theater because when it opened back in 2001, it was world-class theater with top, you know, the top-of-the-line lighting and sound equipment. And over the past few years, we've been reinvesting in the theater to keep it that way. And I'd just like to remind residents and anybody who might happen to be here today or watching that it is a gem. You know, our residents, a lot of them know that we have this right in our backyard, that you can go down the street to Michigan and Greenfield and enjoy, you know, world-class show with free parking right next door and near home. And what more can we ask for when it comes to great entertainment? So if you've been there, please let others know. If they have not been to our theater, we're continually investing in it to make it a great experience for everyone who attends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing, seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 26, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamood, awarding a sole-source purchase to LC Construction in the amount of $34,850 for Flex Storm Catch Basin inserts for the DPW yard, sewage yard, and motor transport, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. And during an MS4 water storm permit inspection and audit was completed by staff of Eagle, it was determined that changes needed to be made to how storm water runoff was treated through our DPW yard, sewer, sewer yard, and the motor transport yard as well. Therefore, the Water and Sewer Division is contracted with S.D. Construction Products to determine the best course of action to reduce and eliminate any oil and debris from store runoff and eliminate entering into the river. It would determine the best course of action is to purchase the Flex Storm products, which have been installed in all catch basins located in three facilities. Total cost of these storm sewer inserts are $34,850. The price was evaluated and determined to be reasonable based on a comparison price of other cities paid throughout, throughout our region, and it was based on a cooperative contract. Any questions or concerns on this item? Okay, hearing, seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 27, resolution by councilmembers Hamood and Herrick, concurring in amending the supervisory, technical, and professional salary plan to include the new classification and new rates of compensation for safety and security coordinator pursuant to Civil Service Resolution Number 8473-22, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, this request is to reduce the part-time FTEs equivalencies in the facility administrator by creating one full-time safety and security coordinator. The title Safety and Security Coordinator was not in the current salary plan and subsequently was reviewed by H, by Human Resources and approved by our Civil Service Commission on the December 8, 2022 meeting. This change will have no impact on the 23 fiscal budget and current personnel position account. Immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Paris?
Yes, if I could, I'd just like to hear possibly from the Recreation Director a little bit more about the duties and responsibilities of this individual for this position and what's going to be expected of them to do. I'm not really familiar with it other than what's brought before us, so I'd just like to hear a little bit more about it.
Sean Fletcher, Parks and Recreation Director. So the position request before you replaces a part-time position that was formerly titled Enforcement Coordinator. We feel a Safety and Security Coordinator is a better title for that position. The position would work nights, weekends, in the center where we have, that's when we get really busy, especially during the late fall and winter months. So really having that extra level of a person that can be in the building, in the gym, available to contact with police and make sure, you know, patrons are staying safe. So we would work with our, our friends in the Police Department to train this individual, to make sure that they know how to deescalate, that they know how to handle all the situations effectively. They would also assist us with special events, and they would also develop and implement various plans with input from myself, our Emergency Management Coordinator. We would have trainings like active shooter trainings, tornadoes, fires, those kinds of things, and that individual would coordinate this. One other role this person would be included in would be when we have large events at the center and every parking space is at a premium, we've developed a parking plan so that we can hopefully not run into situations where people are just driving around and looking for parking. That individual that we put in this position would coordinate that as well. Again, I talked about the training. We feel like this is an important person for our department, so we would work with our own Police Department to have training available to that individual. The other piece to this is when the, the center slows down in the summer months, this individual would also help us in the parks.
If I could ask, is this a uniform position, or what distinguishes this person from anyone else working there?
Not in, like a police officer's uniform, but probably a polo and slacks or at least nice shorts in the summer in the hotter months.
And how would they be able to communicate with the Police Department?
We have radio capability within our department to immediately connect with police versus calling 911.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
In the last couple, I will say the last couple incidents we've had, the police have been there quick, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item?
I'll add just some additional context.
Yes, Mayor.
So at the Performing Arts Center, I think council is aware of a recent fight that kind of broke out previously at this Performing Arts Center. We see kind of these scuttles happening frequently. The other feedback that we got from Parks and Rec employees was a lot of the front desk employees are sometimes tasked with clearing everybody out when the center shuts down, and sometimes the young kids that are there don't really want to listen to the person that's working that front desk. And so this coordinator will assist in that task, and we're also making sure that this coordinator can work with the Police Department. And so if we have somebody nearby the center to come at the closing hours to work with the security center, to also make sure that it's, you know, it closes properly, we have no issues that happen, nobody's trying to be a tough guy with the people working the front desk, everybody's just leaving on their own accord. And so we think it's just a better approach to safety at our centers, but also in the summer months throughout our parks.
Okay, Councilman Paris, you have something?
Yes, thank you. Just one follow-up to that. Mayor, I appreciate your comments. I do, because the safety and security of our residents and our employees is extremely important. So I'm just kind of curious then, should we possibly look at expanding something like this into the future? What comes to mind immediately is the kiosk. You know, within the building of the DAC, it's open. It's open for anybody to come in. You get disgruntled people. You got people wanting to pay their taxes, and they're not happy about that, or may demand to see somebody. I'm just talking about the comments, you know, back and forth between employees and people that may not be happy, and just wondering if that's something that could possibly, by what I'm hearing tonight as a description, it, it just occurred to me just by the discussion that maybe it's something that we should consider for the kiosk.
Those conversations through the council, but those conversations are currently happening internally just about broader safety protocols across the city, especially at access points where we have residents interacting with employees, just to ensure everybody has the best overall experience. And so I think we're going to learn from these lessons at the Performing Arts Center, but we're always actively assessing our security risk in every single building across the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing, seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 28, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Hamood, authorizing the Finance Department to recognize and appropriate a donation from the Floyd L. and Mary Dietrich Height Charitable Trust in the amount of $7,459.73 for the Dearborn Historical Museum.
Okay, and this is a reoccurring contribution that is acknowledged by the City Council annually. It is to recognize and appropriate in receipt of $7,459.73, was a donation from the Floyd L. and Mary Dietrich Height Charitable Trust of Dearborn Historical Museum. The donation is stipulated to be used for the museum archives. The Floyd and Mary Wright Dietrich Charitable Trust was created in the 1980s and provides an annual contribution that is specified to be used towards the Dearborn Historical Museum Archives. We request, I'm sorry, the request that the donation is recognized for private sources and that it be appropriated accordingly for archive expenditures. The Dearborn Archive Collection of the, at the historical McFadden Ross House compromises hundreds of thousands of photographs, documents, books, and maps, and more. So we do appreciate this donation. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing, hearing, seeing, hearing, seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 29, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris, concurring in the appointment of Kristen Polling to the Historical Commission with the term ending June 30, 2025, and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and this recommendation for the approval and appointment of Kristen Polling to serve the Dearborn Historical Commission for a term of three-year term, which will end June 30, 2025, we do appreciate all our commissioners that volunteer and help contribute to these very important positions in the city. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing, seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item 30, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Al Perata, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you. Al Perata, the founder of Dearborn, I'm sorry, of Donaville, USA, in Dearborn, in 1966 was born, in, I'm sorry, was born in August 13 of 1931 and peacefully passed away on December 8 of 2022 at the age of 91. He is survived by his loving wife, Adele, of 57 years, his two sons, John and Mark, along with his grandchildren Luke and Sidney, Perata, as well as many nieces and nephews. Al served as a Coast Guard during the Korean War and retired in 1974 from the Dearborn Police Department after serving 20 years of distinguished service to our force. After his retirement of the Police Department, he pursued his love for donuts with operating three donut businesses inside of Dearborn that were very successful before retiring in 2001. Al was thankful to have a multifaceted career where he spent much time doing what he loved, enriching Dearborn community and sharing time with his family and friends. He, he is known to approach all aspects of life in the most optimistic way and was very proud of his accomplishments together with his family. We will forever remember Al for his keen sense of business ownership and making those businesses successful, as well as enjoying many in, in the city of Dearborn. His positive attitude, generosity, and sense of humor will be dearly missed by his family, friends, and neighbors, and to all we offer our deepest condolences. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I believe that I've got a little bit more of a perspective in some ways about Al because of him being a prior police officer. He spent the vast majority of his career before I joined Dearborn PD, but I, I've got to tell you a couple of things about him. Remember that Al was instrumental in having three different donut shops in Dearborn, and I think police and donut shops are kind of synonymous. However, I can always remember Michigan and Charles and the number of years that I worked the midnight shift, that we would stop in Michigan and Charles, and Charles, and then, which is no longer there now, you know, Donaville is, and then Donaville at, what is it, Michigan and Nowland is no longer there also. But we had a place, a refuge to go to have a cup of coffee and get our reports done. And then Al was back in an era of old timers that I used to be able to converse with once in a while. And for the most part, the cops wouldn't even, the senior cops wouldn't talk to you until you had five years on the job. A lot has changed since then. But what I wanted to say about Al is he could be a very serious individual, very opinionated sometimes. He was very heavily into politics, and he had opinions about everything. A lot of the retired groups would gather at Leon's Restaurant. Matter of fact, it was this morning, I wasn't able to make it. But we do meet once a month, and we would share stories, share war stories, and it's a little bit different of a camaraderie that we had over the years as opposed to now, because police officers and firefighters no longer live in the city. A lot of them don't. And then you have 12-hour shifts now for the Police Department. It used to be eight hours, so you'd get together after hours or before work. So I really appreciate Al, that he's always going to be remembered because a lot of war stories, a lot of good times, and it just brings a smile to my face, and I'm very, very happy to have known this man. So, thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Council. Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 31, resolution by Council President Pro Tem Herrick, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Len Mazur, and requesting immediate effect.
Leonard Len, as known to his friends Herman Mazur, was born April 30, 1926 on Yinger Street in East Dearborn, and sadly passed away on November 17, 2022 at the age of 96. Len is preceded in death by his wife, Lorraine Ann Wojcik Mazur, son Carl Paul Mazur, sisters Ginny Mansigal and Irene Carr, his parents, and many other loved ones. Leonard is survived by three children, Mark, Ronnie Anne, Karen, and Karen Mazur. A lot of people here who work for the city knew Ronnie, worked and recently retired from the city of Dearborn. And so we had heard, we heard about her father through Ronnie. But in addition to his three children, he had six grandchildren, Brandon, Matthew, Lauren, Luke, and Grant, as well as seven great-grandchildren. In his early years, Len worked at Camp Dearborn, which is where he met his wife, Lorraine, who was working as a lifeguard. A graduate of Fortson High School, a proud World War II Marine veteran, Len is remembered by many current Dearborn residents for his 31 years of service working in the Dearborn Public Schools. He was a teacher at Bryant Junior High and served as principal at Dearborn High School from 1963 to 1984 until his retirement. That is where I had the, the pleasure of knowing Mr. Mazur as my principal at Dearborn High, and I know that at least one other council member attended Dearborn High when Mr. Mazur was our principal. After his retirement, Len often volunteered to help raise funds for the Fortson Alumni Association by working in the beer tent at Dearborn's Homecoming Festival until he was 93. His favorite pastimes included traveling, fishing, golfing, gardening, reading, and spending time with his family. He enjoyed fishing in Alaska and beach life in Alabama. He became a regular face in Lovell, Michigan, near the Osoboe River where he mastered the art of fly fishing and called it his second home since the age of 13. Len was a gracious person and lived his life to the fullest. Friends and family note that Len always focused on his blessing and never took anything for granted. Referring to his life after his passing, Len would ask not to be mourned, but instead asked others to celebrate his life of 96 years. Len Mazur was a staple of the Dearborn community, and he will be greatly missed. The impact he had on the lives around him will not be forgotten. To all whose lives were touched by Len, we offer most sincere condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 32, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, offering the condolences to the family of Pio Marzolo, and requesting immediate effect.
Pio Marzolo was born in Anna, Italy to Angela and Ramon Marzolo on June 4, 1943. His parents immigrated to the United States when he was seven years old. His siblings were Enzo Diva and the late Aurelio. Pio was introduced to his wife Carol by her grandmother when Pio was only nine and Carol was five, but their first date came much later when Carol senior prom. Both graduated from Fortson High School and were married as a, married at St. Alphonsus Church in Dearborn on June 3, 1967. Pio and Carol had five children, Maria, Carlo, Mark, Christina, and Anthony. Pio adored his 21 grandchildren and had a special affection for his one and only great-grandchild. Pio was the epitome of hard work. He worked full-time at the Marathon Oil Corporation in Detroit, but he took many part-time jobs, nights and weekends to make sure that his family was taken care of. Pio was also the first person to lend a helping hand to a family member, neighbor, or friend who needed help on any project. Pio was a drak of all cha, of all trades, but especially a good brick and cement work layer. He was called hundreds of times to give advice on how to lay brick pavers, cement, tile flooring, walkways, and brick walls. Pio cared for so much of his family that most of his day occupied thinking of ways that he could help his children and grandchildren and other family members. God created a truly caring man in Pio. He loved, he loved being together with his large family at his home, so it was fitting that Pio passed away there. He was surrounded by his wife, children, and grandchildren. Over 300 people attended in his honor at his funeral. They all had stories about Pio, Pio and his, and helped him on, on his way together. Truly, Pio will truly be loved by all that who knew him and will be missed, but will always be remembered. Councilman Paris has something to add?
Thank you, Council President. What I will say about Pio is I did go to the funeral service, had the viewing, and was amazed by the number of people that were there, but also hearing some of the anecdotal stories about his life and the effect that he had on his family. And in particular, viewing some of the pictures, there were a lot of comments that were made about about the effect of grandpa on their lives and the other family members, but also something that is interesting to note too, even before our clerk, Mr. Durany, was here as city clerk, that both Pio and his wife Carol apparently served with the clerk's office on Election Day for about 20 years. So, they were out there for all the different elections for many, many years before Clerk Durany, you know, came on board. And I just appreciated hearing some of the stories and his service to the community and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on his behalf.
I appreciate it. Also, Clerk Durany, who is the son-in-law of Pio, would like to make a few statements as well.
Yeah, just real briefly, I thank you, first of all, for saying those kind of words about him. I, it means a lot to me that you guys did that, so thank you. Pio, of course, was the patriarch of his huge Italian family and his loss was felt by virtually every member of the family. I would say Pio was also a true Dearbornite because his family had lived in Dearborn for 75 years and, and he had a trailer at Camp Dearborn for like the past 50 of those years. He loved to entertain there. Family members went there almost every year for family reunions. He invited friends over for parties, so he really truly enjoyed Camp Dearborn. So, that was very, very important to him and he just loved being in Dearborn. To sum it up, he was just a good, honest, caring, honest individual. I was blessed that God put him in my life and like many, many others, I will miss him dearly. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Clerk Durany. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Nothing further from the clerk's office.
Okay, this time before we open up to the council, I know that we have a new member we introduced and we used to have, I think, our other councilwomen be our birthday switcher, so it's on my, my, my watch today to recognize Councilman Abraham. Birthday's coming up on the 12th. We won't mention no names, but we both know we're Fordson grads, so we do want to wish you happy birthday, Bob. Appreciate your.
Thank you.
Your, your time on the council and then your, your length of time does help us a lot on a lot of things that we can get through, so it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
No, I didn't want to get there. I didn't want to call him what we used to call him in the past, Dean or not, but.
We like to use the term vintage.
Vintage. There you go. But happy birthday. We're going to have to designate a council person for the birthdays because we had one in the past, so. Yeah, maybe we'll give it to Gary. So, happy birthday, Bob. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? I'd like to open up. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the Dearborn Historical Museum, I'd like to mention a couple of upcoming events. Tomorrow night, Preservation Dearborn will be discussing a topic, and I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me, the older homes in Dearborn. But in particular, we wanted to note that in recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which is coming up on Monday, the Historical Museum is holding a special event from 1:00 until 3:00 PM at the McFadden Ross House at 9:15, South Brady. The program events include an "I Have a Dream" cloud wall, MLK Martin Luther King flip book, word search, interactive games, and more. And the admission, admission is free. Donations are always accepted to help fund our gem, the Historical Museum, but all are welcome to attend this event and honor the life of Martin Luther King Jr. and the impact that he made on, during his life and even to this day, we follow in his footsteps in trying to make a, make our world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. I just want to take one moment to recognize Dearborn Police. January 9th, annually since 2015, has been Police Officer Appreciation Day, so thank you to our Dearborn Police Officers and to our Police Chief, just recognizing them. We did have a visitor to our committee, the whole, on Thursday from the Charter Commission and I know me personally, I've attended a number of the Charter Commission meetings and/or have watched them. I would just like to remind the public on behalf of the Charter Commission, who has asked us to go ahead, or me, to go ahead and make sure the public understands that there is a community survey that is available by going online on the city Dearborn website. There is a tab on the right side of the screen for Charter Commission and if you go ahead and click on that tab, it will get you to the survey. It's very short, you know, making your voices heard on some vital topics that they've talked about, about political wards, qualifications of elected officials, term limits, disclosure of financial interest by candidates and elected officials, and limitations on taxation. They want to hear from you, what your thoughts are. It's a very short survey and if you get a chance to do so, please make that out. And last but not least, I just have a question for the administration to the Police Chief, just asking offhand if Chief Shaheen may have any kind of a report that I believe was coming out in November, a council meeting that I asked for any traffic information or any complaints that we've had around Ford Road and North Martha, Ford Road and North Elizabeth, about a business that opened up with some traffic complaints that we had in the area and parking issues. And I'm wondering if there's anything to report two months later.
Herrick, you have.
Which business are you speaking to?
Ford Road and Martha.
Which businesses is this in particular?
I'd rather not mention the, because it's not specific to the businesses for the traffic in that area. I don't have a complaint with the business. I have a complaint with possibly public safety issues, you know, the traffic in particular and some of the parking issues that were discussed back and during the November meeting towards the end.
Yes, Shaheen, Chief of Police. Councilman Perez, we've been monitoring that intersection or that turnaround that we talked about at that council meeting and the report will be forthcoming.
Anything about the parking complaints because I know it was mentioned and I think one of our other council members, you alluded to also have some conversation too about the possibility of permit parking or how the parking is affecting that general area of the residential areas?
We haven't noticed any, I'll let the report come forthcoming. It'll be, it'll be coming relative to the parking issue and the, and the turnaround.
Okay, and in particular, I don't think there's any, I don't know that there's any stacking issues, but as far as traffic issues.
We've monitored the traffic, as I said we would, and the turnaround and the parking.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief.
Stacking, just to clarify, stacking issues are for drive-throughs? Is there a drive-through in the area?
No, it's not drive-through. You're absolutely correct. It's for traffic backing up on Ford Road trying to gain entry.
Okay.
Into the parking lot. I stand corrected. You are correct.
Okay, no, no problem. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilman Hamud, do you have something? All right, Councilman Hamud.
Since this is our first full meeting of 2023, I have to say, I think we've talked about this kind of informally, but I'm excited for the items that we're going to have this year because we have a lot more to do. I mean, we got a lot done last year, but I think this year, one of, some of the big highlights that everyone could look forward to are going to include a master plan update, which I think we've discussed. There's a bunch of items that I'm not going to, you know, I figure you're going to talk about the, the technology items. I'll leave that for the mayor and then, you know, there's, there's even a lot more ordinance updates and things like that that we're going to get to that we did not get to last year. So, stay tuned, please. We're going to ask for a lot more public input this year even than last year. And then also, on a more minor note, there's a, there's a community event in the South End on Friday. The Slidown Wildcats are playing, it says an all-star special guest team, so. All caps? Yeah, all caps. So, so that's, it's going to be interesting. I'm going to be there with City TV, so hopefully we'll get some interviews with the mayor and Commissioner Baydun. So, I hope everybody attends. I think it's going to be a fun time, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else from any of my colleagues on council? Okay. Anything from the administration or mayor?
Just to follow up on Councilman Hamud, it is an all-star lineup, if I can say so myself. I'm a very competitive person. I don't care for the age of my opponent. A win is a win, a loss is a loss.
That is true.
And so, I'm hoping that with Sam Baydun's height, we have an advantage as well as we'll put him at the front net and if the seventh graders can't jump as high as Sam Baydun, you know, that's unfortunate. 22 was a busy year and so, first and foremost, a Happy New Year to all of our residents. I hope that you got to enjoy some time with some loved ones. And we have a lot in store for 2023. As it pertains to the IT item, that will come before the next council meeting, so we'll all get to speak on that publicly and really share the exciting news. We had a mayor's briefing and so, much more will come. What I want to conclude on really is on the, the same notes as Councilman Perez, as it pertains to our law enforcement. You know, over the last two weeks, in particular over the holidays, there have been a number of incidents where the life of our police officers, you know, they're on the line each and every single day, every hour they're out on the job, but near catastrophic incidents that might have unfolded here at the city. And we often don't think about it when we're at home, about them putting on their uniform, going out each and every single day to serve and to protect. And at the end of the day, these are human beings, they're individuals. And after each critical incident, you know, I had the opportunity to call our officers to check in on them because the mental trauma they take home to themselves, to their family, it's real. And so, I really just want to extend our thanks and our appreciation and whatever we can be doing, know that we are doing and that we're working closely with our Police Chief and with our police officers each and every single day to make sure that they return home to their family and to their loved ones and to that everybody who visits our city or lives in our city is protected in the, in the best possible way. So, just a thank you for what you do day in and day out. We might not say every single day, but know that we appreciate you and keep you in our thoughts and our prayers each and every single day. That's all the administration has.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, anything from your department, your office?
Nothing from my office, but my mother-in-law just texted me and she wanted to thank the council for the, some of the resolution and make you sorry that she couldn't be here tonight in person, but she wanted to thank the council.
Sorry we didn't talk about the tomato sauce.
Yes.
And the contraption in the garage to make it.
Okay.
Well, yeah, thank you for us, but it's the least we could do. All right, any other, I think that's it from the council administration. Anybody, now we will go to our public comment section, our final public comment section. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council regarding city business? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing and seeing there's none, I will undertake a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion adjourned by Councilman Hamud. We are adjourned.